Councilor Baker. Councilor Siomo. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Lamatina.
Councilor Lamatina?
Councilor Lydia.
Yeah, I'm here.
Councilor McCarthy. Councilor Murphy. Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Presley. Councilor Presley. Councilor Wu. Councilor Yancey. And Councilor Zachem. Mr. President?
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would like to invite Councilor Presley and Pastor Kim Oden to come forward, please. And I would ask that this time for all council and guests to please rise as Councilor Presley will come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. Now, after the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Councilor Presley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Presley.
Councilor President. Good morning, everyone. Joining us today are two people very familiar to the city of Boston and to our council. They are people that I consider an inspiration both in love. They've been married for 34 years and an inspiration and role models in service. So joining us today, we have pastors Ronald Odom Sr. and Kim Odom. They are pillars in their community and advocates in the work of violence prevention. As you will know, after the tragic death of their son Stephen Odom to gun violence in 2007, they became very active in the peace movement and doing everything possible to ensure that no other parent would know that devastation. Kim specifically became active working for the Boston Public Health Commission in the Division of Violence Prevention and also one of the founders of Operation Lipstick, of which I'm very proud to serve on the board. Ladies involved in putting a stop to interstate killing. And Pastor Ron Odom recently retired from the United States Postal Service after 35 years. So they've been married 34 years and he just retired from the United Postal Service after 34 years. 35, okay. I keep taking that one year away from him. I apologize. And as if they haven't already done enough, these two pastors and pillars of the community, this dynamic and, you know, service-led couple, they also lead Rock, which is redefining our communities, and they host the Source of Our Strength Radio Show, which airs every fourth Sunday on Boston Praise Radio. And you just had your annual redefining our communities block party just this past weekend, in fact. So without further ado, I will bring to the dais Kim Odom of Shrew Vine Church in Dorchester to deliver today's invocation. Thank you. That was God.
Pay attention.
Good morning, everyone. And thank you all for being here this morning and for this invitation. I want to thank Councilor Presley for the invitation to serve in this sacred capacity, to offer up a prayer of offering in this place today, knowing that we all have a service to the people in our communities. But you have been elected to serve the citizens of this city. And what an awesome responsibility that you have. And I'm honored to be here today to pray this prayer covering over you. And with that said, let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we look to you this afternoon with Thanksgiving for this day and this hour. Thank you for the mayor of this house we call City Hall, Mayor Marty Walsh, and for this chamber where the interests and concerns of the citizens of this city are presented for thoughtful review by these elected men and women who make up this great body of city councilors. We pray your blessings upon them as they have gathered in pursuit of accomplishing the goals of the agenda set before them and their charge to advocate on behalf of the citizens of this great city of Boston. May your divine power give guidance to each of them individually and collectively. And may wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another be the presiding elements of all engaging dialogue. This is our prayer. And let all that agree say amen. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor Kim Oden, for your kind words and inspiring message. Councilor Presley.
... of the United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Presley, and thank the Odoms for being here with us today. At this time, I'd like to invite Councilor Murphy to come up and to make a presentation. Council Murphy, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everybody. It's my honor today to introduce, for recognition here at the Boston City Council, the Lord Mayor of Belfast, Ireland, Arthur Carson, who is here for a four- or five-day visit in the city of Boston last year. Mayor Walsh and the Mayor Carson's predecessor in Ireland declared a sister-city relationship between the city of Boston and Belfast, Ireland. And yesterday, I joined my counterpart, Councilor O'Malley, and Senator Rush and Rep. Coppinger out in West Roxbury to welcome the Lord Mayor to the Irish Social Club. And I said to him at the time, "It would be good if you could come in the chamber and we could recognize you being here." And as a result, we have a resolution, be it resolved that the Boston City Council does hereby declare September 16, 2015, Lord Mayor of Belfast, Arthur Carson Day in the city of Boston. And be it further resolved that the members of the city council in meeting assembled do hereby declare that September 16 be Lord Mayor of Belfast, Arthur Carson Day in the city, and that this resolution be duly signed by the president of the city council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston. And that is done. And let me present the Lord Mayor, Arthur Carson.
President, Council Murphy, fellow councilors, ladies and gentlemen, well, what an honor, I have to say. And I'm glad I went. My real name is Arthur, right? And kind of it's my mother who only calls me Arthur. Kind of everybody else calls me Arthur. Because you could have created a small bit of confusion because, as you know, Guinness, which is a great kind of export from Ireland, have an Arthur Day, which I think is September 23rd. So two Arthur Days, maybe in the one in Boston and one across Ireland may have been a bit confusing. But what an honor, and I really thank you for bestowing that upon me. Of course, I appreciate Council Murphy's invitation. I met him yesterday in West Roxbury, and he asked me today to attend the council, and I was honored to do it. So I appreciate you having me here today, of course. My predecessor, my friend and comrade, Councilor Marcy Noomuluhur, in 2014, signed a sister-city agreement on behalf of Belfast with your great mayor, Martin Malts, who signed it on behalf of Boston. And we know historically there's great connections between the city of Boston and Ireland anyway. And there are great connections between the city of Boston and Belfast, from my point of view in particular. Although I have to say, I'm fed up hearing about County Galway since I've been here. So I'm not sure what's going on there. So really, the sister-city agreement really is about us underpinning what is already a special relationship. And that really commits the two cities to work together and kind of building, kind of work around themes of investment in trade, tourism, education, and of course, our culture. Because the two cities share a great maritime history as well, of course, and Boston being the kind of the port that was the gateway to America for many of my Irish citizens. And of course, probably apart from Guinness, Ireland would be well-known for exporting its people because we are kind of all over the world as well. So I appreciate you taking the time of letting me speak to you today. I think I was talking to Stephen in the present earlier. A population of some 645,000 indigenous people live in the city and a council team of 12. I live in a city that has 330,000 of a population, and we have 60 councilors who I have to manage on a monthly basis at a meeting. And let me tell you, sometimes it gets a bit feisty because you know Irish politics. And at the last meeting of council, there was a small drop of blood spilled. So it kind of gets very interesting. So this is, this would be heaven for me, I have to say. Mr. President, thank you. In my view, you have a fairly easy job. When I get 60 kind of Republican, Unionist, nationalist, and loyalist kind of politicians in one room, believe you me, it gets a bit warmer in the years. And they're hard to manage sometimes. But listen, it's my second civic visit in five months to the city. My first ever time was in April of this year, and I had a fantastic time. Of course, we had the Friendship Four Ace Hockey Tournament that's coming to Belfast over Thanksgiving weekend in November. And Councilor, or sorry, Mayor Walsh has committed to attend that along with obviously the colleges and the commissioners and the coaches. And they're playing competitive hockey. We'll have Colgate, Boston, UMass Lowell, and Northeastern. They're going to be playing for points for the first time ever outside of the U.S. And that's, you know, so it's a big event for Boston. And believe you me, it's a massive event for Belfast. And we're very much looking forward to that. It's going to be a real kind of blood and thunder ace hockey game and kind of non-ice, kind of Nancy exhibition stuff. So we're looking forward to that. And I was fortunate to be here. My first ever ace hockey game was Boston and Providence back in April. And of course, Providence turned Boston over. I'm not sure if that's the result you would have wanted. But here, it's all about the taking part, isn't it? So I look forward to that event. And we have a kind of number of connections between the two cities that we're working on. Francis and I are here. Kind of firm up some of those kind of arrangements for future events between the two cities. So absolutely honored to have that kind of bestowed upon me today. I wasn't expecting it. A real honor. And I really thank you for letting me address your council today. So thank you very much indeed.
Yeah, I know. So the Lord Mayor is the council president. He's the council president. It seems like a more sensible way to have a government. Where the council president is the mayor, too.
That's a birthday boy over there.
You see?
This is for my Twitter feed. This is the most important. I'm under threat at there from sending. If I don't tweet, I'm finished. They're cool, they're cool, LP. I wouldn't be the first one, let me tell you. Oh, so you want me to stare? Next day tomorrow, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Arthur. Good to see you. Arthur Carson, the Lord Mayor of Belfast. Thank you very much. He seemed quite comfortable up here with the small number of councilors, only 13. I can imagine if there was 60 of us. ... that I wanted to just bring to the attention. We were hoping to have recipients of the Congressional Medal of Honor to join us. But they're all up at the State House, being received by the governor right now. And so the coordination wasn't possible. But I did want to let you all know that I did put a resolution together. And I'll just read the beginning and the last. And I will present this to them on behalf of all of us. That whereas on August 5, 1958, President Dwight Eisenhower signed legislation that sent to him by Congress chartering the Congressional Medal of Honor Society. And that the purpose of the organization was clearly spelled out in its charter to create a bond of brotherhood and camaraderie among all living recipients of the Medal of Honor, along with maintaining the memory and respect for those who died receiving the Medal of Honor. We have 47 recipients here out of 78. And I met many of them last night at the mayor's reception. If you get a chance to participate, I think it's a good idea to meet these very special people who have sacrificed more than most could ever imagine in service to our country. So thank you for that. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1499, message and order authorizing the police department to accept and expend a donation from the National Insurance Crime Bureau of four 2015 Honda Accord sports tires and rims. The materials will be used on a bait vehicle as part of the auto theft unit's investigation into tire theft series in the city. And docket number 1500, message and order authorizing the police department to accept and expend a donation from the National Insurance Crime Bureau of four GPD model SC 308-1010 devices enclosed within the Pelican cases. The device will be deployed in bait rims and used by the auto theft unit during investigations to address complaints from the community relative to this type of theft and will further the department's overall goal of community policing.
Council Murphy? Mr. President, I'd like to move suspension of the rules in passage of dockets 1499 and 1500 at this time. Now, thank you, Council Murphy. Council Murphy moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1499. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1499 has passed. Councilor Murphy moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1500. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1500 has passed. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1501, notices received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., Thursday, September 3, 2015.
A docket 1501 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1502, communication was received from Keegan Werlin LLP regarding Instar Electric Company, BFSB 14-04 DPU, 14-153 slash 14-154.
A docket 1502 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Docket number 1298, order for hearing to discuss ongoing planned improvements to Boston's cycling infrastructure.
Our chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Councilor McCarthy, on docket 1298.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Docket number 1298 was an incredibly well-attended hearing. Representatives from the Boston Police Department, Boston Transportation Department, as well as the Chief of Streets, Chris Osgood, attended. There's a lot of great information being shared by cyclists and cycle enthusiasts alike regarding cycle tracks, public infrastructure, safety, safety of the riders, as well as pedestrians and drivers. A lot of budget questions. Ultimately, we're going to keep this in committee. But through the chair, if I could defer to the author of docket number 1298, Council Presley.
Thank you, Council. On the docket, Council Presley.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for running the hearing so well. It ran close to three hours, was very well-attended. And as the chair alluded to, was in some ways very informative, but in some ways provided confirmation of the need for policy change, culture shifts, and financial investment. You know, for example, the Vision Zero Initiative at this time is funded to the tune of something like 0.7%. And, you know, ultimately, this is a matter of public safety. This is a matter of public health. It's a matter of social justice in terms of providing transit access for many low-income communities. And it's a matter of life or death. And so we look forward to advancing our work in this space. And thank the advocates and the allies for their participation and so many of you who participated. And we did make it clear to everyone in the room, although there was strong attendance by our colleagues, that everyone has very busy schedules. But everyone's committed to working on this issue as evidenced by the fact that sign-on to this order was unanimous. So we thank everyone for that commitment. We have a lot of work to do to ensure that we can coexist and to share our roadways to ensure the safety of pedestrians, of cyclists, and our motor vehicle drivers. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Docket 1298 will remain in the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1503, Councilor Jackson offered the following order for hearing regarding recess and recreational activities in Boston Public Schools.
Chair recognizes Councilor Jackson on docket 1503.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Massachusetts General Law defines physical education as one of the other subjects that counts towards the 900 hours required for young people annually. But excludes recess from courses that may be lumped under the title of structured learning time. The elimination of daily recess from the school day has coincided with a national and local trend of increased standardized testing at the elementary school level and steadily rising rates of obesity. In the city of Boston, childhood obesity rates hover at 39.5% for young people. Black and Latino students living in large cities and attending public schools are least likely to be granted unstructured playtime in the course of the school day and are disproportionately suspended, expelled, and arrested for poor behavior. It is incumbent upon us to look after the 57,000 young people in the city of Boston. I know many of us, our only A was in recess in school. It allows young people to learn how to negotiate with peers, an opportunity to engage their imaginations. And it's just simply a good idea to make sure that our young people who are being tested up to 29 days a year have an opportunity to get out of the building, to have some fun, also to exercise. So I look forward to bringing organizations like Playworks to Boston Public Schools, as well as parent organizing organizations to the table to have the conversation about how we do better in this space. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Of course, I rise to commend the chair of the Education Committee. Recreation is a very important issue. And one of the reasons for the better part of the last two decades I've been pushing the construction of a new high school is because thousands of our high school students don't even have gymnasiums. So I'm looking forward to this particular hearing and would like to have my name added. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Yancey. And please add Council Yancey's name. And Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to commend the maker, ask that my name be added. You know, in my time on this body, working in collaboration with all of you, we've achieved some real successes in District 6 in terms of growing and expanding facilities for our schools. Right now, underway at the Beethoven Elementary School is a new playground that we were able to push and succeed in the capital budget. The Curly School in Jamaica Plain, through some support from the city, but really parents raised over $200,000 to build a new field. And just this weekend was the opening of Phase 2 of Millennium Park, which is an incredible new football field, turf football field, running track, baseball diamond, softball diamond, right next to the West Roxbury Educational Complex. Not only local sports leagues will use it, but obviously the school as well. So this is something where I think the council understands the importance and has led the lead that we've provided some facilities. We still have quite a ways to go. But this is a good conversation that we should be having to make sure that the kids not only have that rest from a workday, but also are able to be more active and combat issues like obesity and really promoting health. So it's a great issue. I look forward to the hearing and ask that my name be added.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Please add Council O'Malley's name, Council Murphy's name. Please add my name. Councilor Siomo, Councilor Flaherty. Yes, I know. Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem. Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I was so eager, so much energy. If we had recess, maybe I wouldn't have all that extra energy. I would have burned it off. But I rise to commend the maker and ask to have my name added. And the chair of our Education Committee is exactly right. Although I have to say that I am incredulous that we even have to have a hearing about this to underscore and to make this point. And I do want to give a shout out to Playworks, which has been a tremendous partner to so many of our Boston Public Schools and really highlight and underscored the power of play in learning everything from cooperation and teamwork and how to share and also positive conflict resolution. These are all things that happen on the playground and during recess. And in our advocacy, you know, in my work specifically, I would say on issues like improving the quality of school food and making sure we have social emotional wellness supports, all these things are about supporting the readiness of our students to be able to learn. Because otherwise, all the work that we're doing around improving curriculum and expanding capacity and all these things is all in vain if our students are not in a space receptive to receive what is being taught. And they do need to be able to be children and to burn off some of that excess energy. So for all the reasons previously stated, I commend the maker and enthusiastically I wish to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Council Presley's name, add Council Baker's name, add Councilor Lamatina's. Docket 1503 is assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1504, Councilor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to examine creation and implementation of the Fathers Now program.
Councilor Jackson on docket 1504.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As many of you saw across the city of Boston, and Council Presley attended one. I believe Council Yancey also attended one. There was a movement this, at the beginning of the school year, to greet children. Simply go to school and give them high five. And I was open for everybody to do it. I know many of us have been able to do that. And it's just simply a fun and awesome thing for us to do and advocating for our young people. This proposal was put forward in the same vein. First, it actually comes from a young person. Alexander Knowles, who was an intern in my office, actually worked on this and prepared this idea. It really looks at this issue of recidivism. In Suffolk County, we have a 46% recidivism rate. In three years, most folks are going back to jail. And we know that that costs us a whole lot of money. And that money could be actually spent in schools and roads, rail, bridges, everywhere in our community. And so this program is one that's modeled off a program in Newark, New Jersey. The Fathers Now program offers parenting, financial literacy, health and wellness, and resume and interview classes. It's a cohort class. And what the program has done is that the graduates now have a recidivism rate of 6% versus a 64% recidivism rate in Newark, New Jersey. The other thing that we need to look at is that when people are placed in incarceration, it hurts not only that individual, but it also hurts their families. In the Child Welfare League of America, found that children with... In the Child Welfare League of America, found that children with incarcerated parents were more likely to live in poverty, had lower school performance, higher teen pregnancy rates, and higher dropout rates. This is a program that actually looks at teaching fathers how to advocate for their children, and in doing so, they learn how to advocate for themselves. They're able to do better for themselves and then their family to be present, to get jobs, and to become a contributing members of our community and society. This speaks to, it's the simple mantra, we say no child left behind, but it's really no person left behind. We can't throw people away. 95% of the people in prison actually come out. And the question is, what are we doing as a city with the 300 individuals who are entering Suffolk County on a monthly basis to help them do better? So we don't have to worry about what we had to worry about at the Trotter School last week, where there was a murder behind the school that occurred at about 4:15, and young people who were going to school the next day walked past the crime scene and walked past the body. That is unacceptable, and the only way that we get to that is to stop dealing only with the symptoms of the problem and actually get to the root of the problem. And that's what, why I'm putting forward this program. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jack. Please add Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Presley's name, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zaken, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Baker. Please add my name. Everybody, oh, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Siomo. Do you have that, Madam Clerk? I, docket 1504 is assigned to the Special Committee on the Status of Black and Latino Men and Boys. Madam Clerk, docket 1505.
Docket number 1505, Counselor Yancey offered the following ordinance, amending the Boston residency jobs policy.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey on docket 1505.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. As you know, back in the 80s, this body, working with the Mayor of Boston, passed an ordinance requiring increased participation on, on jobs on part of Boston residents, women, and people of color. What I have, what you have before you this afternoon is an update of the numbers for that particular program. However, Mr. President, after consulting with a number of individuals who expressed an interest in this after they saw in the package, they're working on some of the constitutional issues relevant to the implementation of this program. And because of that, and because of my intent to be as inclusive as possible with regards to this issue, because I want everyone to buy into it, at this time, I would request that we withdraw this to be reconsidered in a very near future.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Docket 1505 has been withdrawn. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you like me to read 1506 through 1515?
Please.
Docket number 1506, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding lists of all boards, commissions, and authorities of the city of Boston by name, date, established, enabling legislation, name, title, race, gender, address, and term. 1507, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding lists of active employees as of December 31, 2014, with the names, title, department, and annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the, by name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, residency between October 1, 2014 to December 31, 2014. Docket number 1508, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F, lists of active employees as of June 30, 2014, and the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between April 1, 2014 to June 30, 2014. Docket number 1509, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F, a list of active employees as of June 30, 2015, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, residency between April 1, 2015 to June 30, 2015. Docket number 1510, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F, a list of active employees as of September 30, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between July 1, 2014 to September 30, 2014. Docket number 1511, Counselor Yancey offered, I'm sorry, requesting certain information under Section 17F, lists of active employees as of March 31, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between January 1, 2014 to March 31, 2014. Docket number 1512, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F, lists of active employees as of March 31, 2015, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between January 1, 2015 and March 31, 2015. Docket number 1513, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F from the mayor regarding steps being taken to eliminate disparities in facilities and services based on gender concerning homelessness and recovery clients. 14 detailed questions. Docket number 1514, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F from the mayor regarding steps being taken to eliminate disparities in facilities and services based on gender concerning programs. 6 detailed questions. And docket number 1515, Counselor Yancey offered the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F from the mayor regarding steps being taken to eliminate disparities in facilities and services regarding recovery claims. 4 detailed questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey on dockets 1506 through 1515.
Mr. President, very briefly, these are resubmittals, the information provided by the administration at the previous council meeting is patently non-responsive to the 17F request, so they are being resubmitted today. And I also believe, Mr. President, that this information, which was routinely provided by the previous administration, is critical for this body to do an effective job, particularly in the post-audit capacity. I would also note that the information concerning disparities is a pressing issue, because we have new facilities, for, for example, for the male homeless population, that we have relatively poor facilities for female homeless in our population. So I would like suspension passage on each of these, and hopefully, the administration will take a very close look at each of these 17Fs and make sure that when they respond, they respond to the questions asked, not the questions that they want to answer. For example, I look at the city's finances on a quarterly basis. Providing something for a 12-month period of time when you're requesting quarterly information is not being responsive. So I look forward to discussing each of these issues, once again, with the administration. And point out that the information on personnel was a fairly routine item under the previous administrations, and this is perhaps the only, hopefully, the only instance where this administration has been less transparent than its predecessors. So I'm looking forward to specific responses to these specific questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey moved suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1506 through 1515. You're voting on all of them. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1506 through 1515 has passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1516, Counselors Presley and Jackson offered the following order for a hearing to discuss the status of the early education and care workforce and the potential impacts of pre-K expansion on existing community-based early education and care providers in the city of Boston.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Presley on docket 1516.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a host of early education and care bills currently in committee at the State House, the bulk of which had their public meeting, actually, this morning. And of course, I do want to commend the mayor for his efforts to expand access to pre-K and for being deliberate about creating the correct system for the city in order to ensure quality, universal access to pre-K. I also want to acknowledge the good work of our colleague, Counselor Wu, specifically around early ed and care and incentivizing developers to build onsite care. That's so important for the stabilization of our families, for our workforce, and for economy. And finally, I want to thank Counselor Jackson for his willingness to co-sponsor this order with me in his capacity as Chair of Education Committee, but also he has his own personal connection and, and, and living history on this issue, which we'll speak about shortly. We are introducing this order for this hearing to discuss the status of our early education and care workforce in the city of Boston. This hearing will look specifically at the challenges faced by providers under the current system of early education and care, and also consider and assess projected changes and the unintended consequences on this workforce as the city expands pre-K. Now, while there is a push, deservedly so, to expand access as quickly as possible, I feel it important to look at the structural problems within this industry. The median income for providers ranges from $22,000 to $25,000. Now, you should know, in most low-income and communities of color, this is one of the leading informal economies, these community-based programming and these centers, which means that it provides an opportunity for us to build wealth and to create jobs and to stabilize these communities. And furthermore, not only is the median income for, the income range for providers 22,000 to 25,000, there's also a lack of professional development, and the income changes are subtle if nonexistent, even if these providers do get advanced degrees. So because of that, we see an estimated 30% annual turnover rate. So there are disgraceful wages, poor benefits, little professional development, and high turnover. And this is one of the leading informal economies in our low-income communities and communities of color. So we have an opportunity here. And, and, and I'll also just state the obvious, this certainly does impact the pathway to lifetime learning for those children during this critical, critical time in their development from zero to five that are in these, in these centers and community-based programming venues. So we need this hearing to better understand the structural challenges faced by current center and community-based providers in the context of the early education and care subsidy system, as well as any possible impacts as we are moving four- and five-year-olds out of the current center and community-based system into the BPS school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I actually just want to thank Counselor Presley for her leadership here and the partnership on this. This is personal to me because my mom had a daycare, home daycare for 25 years. Listen, look, and learn. And she works tirelessly on a daily basis. Excuse me. She got up at 5:00 a.m. every single morning and took care of young people from 6:00 a.m., oftentimes till 5:00 and 6:00 at night. When that young person was a, a young person whose parent had a voucher, she got $28 a day to take care of that child for all of that time. Every single one of the children who left my mom's daycare to the chagrin of their, often, oftentimes kindergarten teacher, they all could read, actually, they all could write their name. They knew all of their letters. They knew all of their shape. They do the little snap thing with the button and all that other, other cool stuff. And typically, when they got to the first year of kindergarten, they were in the advanced part of their class and sometimes wreaked a little havoc in those classrooms. Reason why I bring this up is for every action, there are reactions. When we add seats, we also need to be thoughtful about what we're doing to neighborhoods, communities, and particular economies that allow for oftentimes women who are poor to stay at home with their children. And when they have money, it's, it's laudatory when you're able to stay at home with your child. It's a good thing. Oftentimes, when, when women are poor, there are stigmas placed upon them when they're able to stay at home with their children. What it did for me, 1989 is when she started, my freshman year in, in high school, I remind us that we had 151 murders in the city of Boston in 1991. It allowed me to have accountability with someone at home. It really helped, helped me do my homework. It helped me be a better person and a better student. And so I would just simply say, we really need to look at, as we increase the number of seats, what we're doing and the innovation that we can actually put forward in knowing that there's thousands of young people who are being served in these facilities. What can Boston Public Schools do to partner with them? We know that they're already there and they're there on a daily basis. What type of curriculum enhancement can we, can we give them? We also know that the achievement gap actually starts at birth, and signs of it can be seen up to, right around age 2. And so, we also know, recent numbers show we have 3,000, 4,000 young people who are waiting to get into kindergarten. We have an opportunity here in this crisis to actually do some things for the young people who are, who are there, and also to possibly help out those folks who are not making a lot of money, not enough to live in the city of Boston, and for them to be able to maintain, grow, and even professionalize their businesses. So we really look forward to the partnership, and really, not only looking at the innovation and Innovation District and technology, but how do we bring innovation and disruptive technology into daycares and early education in the city of Boston? Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zaken, Counselor Murphy, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Armatina, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Baker, and please add my name. Docket 1516 is assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1517, Counselor Murphy offered the following resolution for the adoption of the Metro Boston Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy on docket 1517.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1517 is a re-adoption of something that the City Council adopted in 2008. It's a five-year update on the Hazard Mitigation Plan that the city submitted to FEMA. And under the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of the year 2000, there's a requirement that all municipalities that wish to be eligible to receive FEMA hazard mitigation grants to adopt a local multi-hazard mitigation plan and to update that plan every five years. City Council adopted it in 2008. It took effect in 2009, and this is the five-year update, 2014. The process...
The process for the planning of the Boston Hazard Mitigation Plan update was led by the Boston Hazard Mitigation Executive Steering Committee comprised of representatives of key city departments and commissions with responsibility for various aspects of the hazardous mitigation. Boston followed a six-step process to update the plan. Number one, map the hazards. Number two, assess the risks and potential damages. Number three, review existing mitigation. Number four, develop mitigation strategies. Number five, plan approval and adoption. And number six, implement and update the plan. All of those were infused with public input on the way. The Boston Hazard Mitigation Executive Steering Committee placed an emphasis on public participation for the plan. City of Boston facilitated participation by the general public and other stakeholders through the city's hazard mitigation executive steering committee, two public meetings hosted by the Boston Conservation Commission, a meeting with the Coordinated Statewide Emergency Preparedness Committee, CoStep, posting the plan to the Boston Environment Department's webpage, and invitations sent to neighborhood groups, the Main Street Business District, municipal boards and commissions, the local chambers of commerce, neighboring communities, and other local or regional entities were also invited to review the plan and provide comment. The update is, this plan acts as a framework for the City of Boston's wide range of hazard mitigation efforts. The Boston Hazard Mitigation Executive Steering Committee established the following hazard mitigation goals for the 2014 plan update. Goal one, protect the health and safety of the public. Goal two, protect existing properties and structures. Goal three, ensure that essential services can function during and after a hazard event. Goal four, work regionally to mitigate impacts from natural hazards and to respond and recover from hazard events. Goal five, determine priorities for directing resources for hazard mitigation in response. And goal six, maintain hazard awareness. The list of existing mitigation measures was updated to reflect their current status as well as to add new mitigation activities in the city since adoption of the previous plan. The steering committee reprioritized all of these measures based on current conditions. The only thing that needs to happen now, Mr. President, is the Boston City Council needs to adopt the City of Boston Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 update to make the City of Boston eligible for FEMA and MEMA reimbursements. And that's what this, and I'm seeking to do today by moving suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Flaherty, I see your button pushed.
Please rise just to add my name added as a co-sponsor and great work by a Chair of Public Safety.
Okay. Please add Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Siomo's name, Counselor McCarthy's name, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu. Please add my name. Counselor Jackson, Counselor Baker, add their name. Counselor Yancey, add his name. Any more? It's a resolution? Is it? No, no, it's an adopt, is it adopting, adopt the resolution. So Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and adoption of 1517. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1517 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, please.
Docket number 1518, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Murphy offered the following order...
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket 1518. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1518 has passed.
Docket number 1519, Counsel Linnahan...
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket 1519. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1519 has passed.
Docket number 1520, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Yancey...
Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket 1520. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1520 has passed. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no late-file matters. This time, is anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheet? Counsel Flaherty, your button's pushed?
If there's no objection, I just want to have my name added to docket 1516 after further clarification from the co-sponsor.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Could you please add Counselor Flaherty's name to that matter? Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. No takers. Good. There are two late-file matters which, in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the matters will be so added. So I move that adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. I would ask all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Ronald Maggie. For Counselor Siomo, Marion O'Neil. Kathy Ann Muse. For Counselor Lamatina, Frances E. Rowan. And Mary Reedy. For Counselor Murphy, his uncle, John F. Mitchell. For Counselor Murphy and Counselor Siomo, John Robert Flavin Jr. For Counselor Yancey, William Moore, Marcella Tatum. One moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, September 23 at noon. All those in favor, say aye. Of adjournment, all opposed, nay. And the ayes have it, the council is so adjourned.